We'll stand with a flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and innocence for all. Thank you. If you remain standing, just like to have a moment of silence for all those who recently lost their lives in the airline helicopter crash in DC. Thank you, everyone. Showing how precious and valuable life is behind a minute of grace. Today is our fourth meeting of the year. It is Thursday, January 30th. At a time when it's penalty day in the morning, officially welcome everyone here. Before we get into our agenda, we have a very, very special person that we're going to be recognizing today, and I don't want to say saying goodbye to her, but she's not leaving. Maggie, because she's been here a very, very long time. She has put her life out front here, serving this county in a lot of different ways, mainly in public safety. And it's going to be hard to say goodbye because the person with her experience and the vast knowledge that she has in that discipline is, in my opinion, irreplaceable to do that. So with that being said, I'm going to ask Maggie if she would please come up and say a few words.
Good morning, commissioners and everybody here. This is a hard two days for me, and I'm sorry. I'm trying not to cry. But when I started, little history for everybody. I literally was hired. They gave me a desk and a phone, not even pencil and paper, and they said, we have no idea how to do this. Figure it out. And honestly, if it was not for the commissioners' staff, Angie's one of them, Ms. Kukula, I call Nancy Ms. Kukula. They really saved me because when I started, we had no money to buy equipment or anything, so it's been an extremely rewarding career. Thirty-two years with the county and starting, we did not have 911, so it's from the beginning. And commissioners through the years, all the commissioners I've gone through, even though I'm 39, have always supported me. And it's not always been easy because the state and the federal give us a lot of mandates, so I'm very proud at least to leave you with a system that is really the top of the line for technology where we are right now. And I will leave it in good hands now. And thank you very much for all your support. Thank you. Audrey and Nancy and Angie and Jimmy and everybody, thank you. And I do not follow directions well.
Well, Maggie, because you have such a big fan base, and around here a long time, I know a lot of people. We're going to ask anyone in the audience if they would like to say a few words on here. Is that okay?
Sure.
Anybody like to say something on behalf of Maggie?
I want to talk about some fun Maggie. Her office was next to purchasing. And every holiday, it was decorated to the max. And it was just with all the stress she had. She brought out fun to compensate for all they had to do to deal with. And we couldn't wait for Halloween, Christmas, and all of that. And when you moved, why did I have to stop?
You create another office.
Next, Robin.
Good morning, commissioners.
Good morning.
Again, I've known Maggie off and on for probably most of her career, however, only working closely with her the last three. And what I can say is that technically she follows under the boss, under the EMA umbrella. However, never knew she was there, which is the highest praise I can give her. Andy Frost and I never had an issue. Things ran smoothly out of that office. And again, you can't say more than that, that the most I ever heard from her is she's going to take a day off. And I had a calendar, but that was about it. So again, to her, again, length of service and professionalism. It's been outstanding and again, a seamless issue for me. Thank you.
Next.
Hi, Will.
Audrey.
From my time here, and I understand a lot in regards to the 911 system, just with working with Maggie and Anna and the different ones who have worked on that. And I know that it's taken our county from a decentralized system to a centralized system. As far as our CAD, our 911 that comes into the system and the hosted system that we have so that all of our first responders can talk with each other and all of that. And Maggie was a good part of pioneering in bringing all that technology and working with AT&amp;T, Vista, and all of the software agencies that have brought our systems to where they are today. And you've done a great job. You've coordinated with those contracts, those agreements, working with Anna and all the different ones, the prosecutor's office, and making sure that we had a good system going forward. I think it's a testament to when our officers are doing mutual aid and they can talk to one another, they can speak the system, they can see where they're at on the CAD and all of that. And so I don't think everybody realizes or understands the magnitude of what that's brought to the county. So thank you for all of that and what you've done in your knowledge and bringing that forward.
I appreciate that.
Maggie, I did recognize you sent that trail runs from Ohio and from First Energy. Just from an outside standpoint, from a utility standpoint, I know this past summer we had to sit down and talk about just some of the responses and some of the issues that we have. You being open to listen to us from the private entity and trying to make it better and safer for the community. So congratulations to you.
Thank you.
Carol.
You know what, Maggie? I've known you properly. I'm not dating us.
Thirty-nine, we'll go with that.
Yeah, and I'm knowing you from the first day you started. You was here with the county and you really brought 911 to where it is today. Because back then, they had no clue. I mean, I don't mean they didn't know what they were doing, but they did. They gave that to you and they dropped it there. You followed the whole system through it. And as Audrey said, brought it to where we are today. And that's why I've been the chair of that committee and I've listened to you meet with new chair people, new members, and sit with them and try to explain the system to them. And you've done that. And you work so hard. We went through a lot of commissioners and a lot of friends that are now not here, have passed. But I mean, always been a friend. And I'm going to miss you. You know, like I tell most of you, we can't speak. The bad part is they give me cell phones. But God bless you. Enjoy your retirement whenever you.
Thank you.
And don't be a stranger. We're here. Always want to visit. I'm sure everybody would like to see you.
Thank you.
Maggie, I don't know you personally, but I've heard what other people have seen. And I've used the 911 system on occasion. I'm grateful for it, thankful for it. And when we use something like that, you never know what goes on behind the scenes, how it came about. And I've heard nothing but good things about how you got it started and the very job you did. And from me coming in, I just want to tell you, I appreciate, I appreciate what you've done and what you've built. I'll be on a great retirement.
Thank you.
Maggie, I want to wish you all the best. I do want to say that many, many years ago, it took on a huge, huge cast. And before I even knew what 911 was, your name was always synonymous with it. And between here, Columbus, and nationally, you were very, very well-known. Maggie has attended, I don't know how many different seminars where she would actually go out and instruct, talk, talk. She built for our community. But one of the things that I always respected about you was your kind heart and personality. You always treated me with respect. You were always nice to me. And if there was something I didn't understand, you always took the time to explain it. Because sometimes I'd pretend I know what you're talking about, but I didn't know all the time.
You were good at that, though. Thank you.
I admit it. It's very intimidating. And as Carol said, please don't be a stranger. I'm sure we could always find a place for you if you decide to come back. You're an exceptional person and I'm not going to miss you. Thank you. So while you're there, we're going to, you have some water, is it? Maggie, we'd like to present this to you. When the county commissioners did the upper envelope of the courthouse, we redid the three statues. We restored them back to their original luster. This was a 3D image printed here locally of the three statues. So the commissioners, myself, Carol Rigetti, and Gina DiFabio would like to present this to you for your service on behalf of Mahoney County. There's proclamation on your retirement. Thank you for your dedication and loyalty to Mahoney County and the rest of it.
Thank you so much.
Oh, wait, let's take a picture. Don't need to. We'll take an actual picture. I'll Photoshop it. Don't worry.
Okay, thanks.
Don't get Anthony's hair. I don't want to say.
Could you Photoshop the body? Thank you.
Thank you. All right, well, Maggie, instead, we'll move into the business portion of our meeting. Carol, ask for motion.
Motion for the approval of previous minutes, word may be number three, Thursday, January 23rd, 2025.
Roll call.
Commissioner DiFabio.
Yes.
Commissioner Remilio Rigetti.
Yes.
Commissioner Chaffecanty.
Yes. Advertizing for bids number one, EVA.
Morning commissioners, again. This is an advertisement for bids for a three-year contract for the maintenance of our 52 Siren network throughout the county. And again, it's something that has to be done, and this is the contract law.
Thank you, sir.
Motion for the approval of advertising for bids number one.
Second, roll call.
Commissioner DiFabio.
Yes.
Commissioner Remilio Rigetti.
Yes.
Commissioner Chaffecanty.
Yes. Journal entry number one.
Motion for the approval of journal entry number one.
Roll call.
Commissioner DiFabio.
Yes.
Commissioner Remilio Rigetti. Commissioner Chaffecanty.
Yes. Trail, A and B, lead, begin with Phil Currier. So, look.
He's not on the computer.
Well, this is to 10 working partners and/or lead-based meetings, chip grant seminars, trainings, conferences scheduled within the state of Ohio and Pennsylvania. The year 2025, estimated $10,000 non-general fund. Letter D, records. For all.
Commissioners, to the town of Ohio Recorder Association, seminars, meetings, conferences, training, et cetera. In the state of Ohio for the year 2025, estimated $10,000.
Second, roll call.
Commissioner DiFabio.
Yes.
Commissioner Remilio Rigetti.
Yeah.
Commissioner Chaffecanty.
Our names are out for.
I know. I'm kidding. Aw, thank you.
She's so excellent. Auditors.
Aw, Sherry.
Sheriff.
I'm just, we have an agreement with the city printing company to do our annual homestead manuals. To approximately 16,000 or 17,000 mailers or anyone who's on homestead, make sure that they are still in my head.
Can I ask a question so you can probably get it? For sure everybody knows this. If nothing changes.
You do not need to return them.
All right. That's what I think a lot of people are asking that question. They get it, but if nothing changes, you do not need to send it back.
Well, and one of the reasons why we make sure we do it first class, we get returns. So that's why we also find out that they are not living there. We also do the death list to make sure that moves pass away. You know, and we check to see if there's a surviving spouse that possibly get it. We also check all the transfers to make sure. So we are very diligent in making sure that whoever studied homestead should be getting it.
And then that homestead follows them if they move into a condo or another house.
There's an application. Everything's based on January 1st date, so if they do and they're prior to 13, it's not an issue. If they're after 14 and it's a needs test, see if you have the income. And it does change every year.
Sheriff, there's one mistake.
Oh, no. What?
You didn't mention about doubling the exemption.
Is that the 26,000 now for the exemption?
Well, that's nice to do that for the residents.
That would be awesome if we, yeah, hopefully sooner or later some more.
I wish we had that coming. So you follow up the other, just follow up. So we asked the way it's.
Yeah, we get a death list from the county auditors association, and then we do the transfers. And then, like I said, this mailer, we will get it returned to us if another no longer living there. So because you don't have to return it, you can give us a double deck.
I would thank you. Tell Ralph.
I will.
All right, clerk of courts. Steve Chacon, anybody from his office?
Jimmy.
Jimmy?
I agree with you. Clerk of courts, agreeing with Ohio Time Corporation for repairs to time recorder machines. There's 13 units, an estimated amount of $10,060, and this is a general fund expenditure.
Okay, thank you, Jimmy. And grants management, Anna.
Good morning, commissioners. This is an agreement with MS Consultants, Inc. for fiscal year 24. Community development block grant, administration services, and the amount of $55,000 non-general.
Thank you. Jimmy, you want to do letter D?
Sure. Letter D, left base, agreement with Howland Company for lead hazards control, healthy homework, at 324 Mistletoe. It's an amount of $45,802, and it's a non-general fund expenditure.
Thanks. Recorders, Corso.
Commissioners, agreement with E Recording Partner Network for dock router plus services at no cost to the county.
Thank you. And recycling, Lou Vega.
Morning commissioners. Item F is an agreement at Youngstown State University. This is for various recycling programs and most importantly, the industrial materials exchange program, which is our principal industrial strategy.
Thank you, Lou. And sanitary, Jill.
Good morning, commissioners. G is an agreement with Evoqua Water Technologies for deionizing water purification systems, utilizing the labs at Borman and Meander wastewater treatment plants in the amount of $6,817 of non-general. H is an agreement with the following electrical companies at various locations. This will be for two years in the estimated amounts of non-general funds for Joe Dickey Electric, $30,000. University Electric, $20,000. Tri-Area Electric, $20,000. I is an agreement with the following mechanical plumbing, piping, and repair and general emergency repairs on as needed basis for two years, and this will be in the estimated amount of non-general. For Western Reserve, $30,000. Elcon Mechanical, $20,000. And J is the agreement with the following machinist, fabrication of metals, motor pump repair, general emergency repairs on the ad needed basis for two years in the estimated amounts of non-general funds for Hendrix Electric, $50,000, and Pump Systems, $15,000.
Thank you. Your motion.
Number three, committee agreements, A, G.
Second, roll call.
Commissioner DiFabio.
Yes.
Commissioner Remilio Rigetti.
Yes.
Commissioner Chaffecanty.
Yes. Change orders for A, engineers, Rick.
Good morning. This is change order number five with APBN Incorporated for Mahoney County paint rehab project. It's in a decrease amount of $13,091.34 non-general fund.
Roll call.
Commissioner DiFabio.
Yes.
Commissioner Remilio Rigetti. Commissioner Chaffecanty.
Yes, resolution provisions.
Motion for the approval of number one, resolution decision.
Roll call.
Commissioner DiFabio.
Yeah.
Commissioner Remilio Rigetti.
Yeah.
Commissioner Chaffecanty.
Yes, record of bids to A, engineers, Rick.
Yeah, this is the bids for the Marcus Street Bridge Rehabilitation Project.
Second, roll call.
Commissioner DiFabio.
Yes.
Commissioner Remilio Rigetti.
Yes.
Commissioner Chaffecanty.
Yes, 3A, resolution awards, letter A, engineers.
This is award to Mahoney Guard Row, CEAO, fiscal year 25, project in Ohio Defense LLC. Any amount of $104,953, non-general and low bid.
Thank you.
Motion for the resolution award, A.
Second, roll call.
Commissioner DiFabio.
Yes.
Commissioner Remilio Rigetti. Commissioner Chaffecanty.
Yes. Moving on, resolutions, number four, letters A through D. Letter A, it's a resolution approving employment of outside council attorney 10-26 to assist with Mahoney County Civil Waste District. Plan in connection with the host agreement and other matters of the amount not to exceed $25,000. Letter B, over me, Jen.
Good morning. This is a resolution approving MOU between the county engineers and commissioners for the road infrastructure sales tax project in Borman Township for $1,175,760 in fees.
Thank you. And if any can proceed, Rob.
Yes, this is for the annual EMPG grant from the state in the amount of $90,967 with an equal local match from the general fund.
Okay, thank you, Robin. And grants management, letter D, Anna.
Commissioners, this is resolutions approving the addendums with the following agencies to extend the services until June 30th, 2026. Funded by the American Rescue Plan Act at no change in amounts. Catholic Charities Regional Agency and Mahoney County Public Health.
Thanks, Hannah. And Sheriff, Adams.
Good morning, commissioners. Letter E is a resolution of necessity to purchase three 2025 Dodge Durango Pursuit SUVs from Greve Chevrolet Jeep Dodge through the state of Ohio, purchasing contract in the estimated amount of $42,869 per vehicle.
Thank you, sir.
Number four, resolutions, A through D.
Second, roll call.
Commissioner DiFabio.
Yes.
Commissioner Remilio Rigetti.
Yes.
Commissioner Chaffecanty.
Yes.
Just so my back isn't everyone. I just wanted to make a quick announcement. We sent out a press release yesterday from the Convention and Visitors Bureau, but I'm very excited to announce that Explore Mahoning is the new identity of the Mahoning County Convention and Visitors Bureau. So this is not just a name change. This is really just showcasing the CVB's commitment to the entire county. All the way from, you know, Lake Milton down to Sebring. So we really want to showcase everything our county has. And, you know, this is a great way for the CVB to really engage with travelers in a modern, more welcoming way, and just showing everything we have here, just from outdoors to our amazing parks, arts, and our museums, food and drink, our wineries, breweries, everything. So this is actually, you can almost think of it as an open invitation to come here and explore. We're really excited about this, and this launch, it's not just a name. This is just the beginning of a lot of what we have coming up. Tara and I have been working very hard to get our travel guide out for 2025. It is en route as we speak. To us, I wish I had one here for you, but hopefully next week. We have 85,000 of them that we are going to be distributing all throughout Ohio, the surrounding states, and the country. And we have a refreshed website, targeted marketing efforts, we're redoing all of our brochures to really have this fun and exciting new identity for the Convention and Visitors Bureau. So we're really excited about it. We'll have to go do a tour just to make sure everybody's.
We have one for shopping district. I like that.
We have shopping. We have antiques. We got it. Yeah. We can make that happen. We might need a few. With as much as we have, we might need a couple days for that. It might have to be a weekend, so.
Give us a free share.
Yeah. I love it.
Maggie and Terry, you do a great job.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Yes.
Who's hiding?
Yeah, why you hide?
I do. I just came to say thank you. I don't think we've done it yet on city council, but I'm sure, I'm hoping that we're going to send me a letter. But now I'm here to say thank you for, for a year, 18 months. We were wandering in the desert, kind of, because we didn't have a home. You know, we were out of our office, out of our chamber since 2023. March, I think it was, something like that. That'd be March, 18 months. A long time. You guys very kindly allowed us to come here and utilize your place. And by doing so, I got a chance to see your camera system. I, yes, well, it's not in yet, but yes, we are installing this system at Youngstown City Council. Yes, so I want to thank you, like I said, for the use of this place and also for letting me see this here system and to talk to your IT guys. So thank you very much. Much appreciated.
For all these partnerships that we may have with Youngstown. You are, you are in Mahoney County. Youngstown is part of Mahoney County.
Sure.
It's the largest city in our county, so I, I believe that any time that we can help each other, I think it's possible, it should be a necessity, but we don't because we're not, as I said when I was at city council. So goes Youngstown, so goes Mahoney County. Because when people come here, and we all know that, we've all been everywhere, where do they ask you? Where are you? You live near Youngstown? Are you in, this, everything's Youngstown. So this is our city, and it's looking fabulous. There's so many different things, such as gigging. So you, you're happening downtown. I mean, I have to brag a little. Since I was.
It's okay.
Yep. Thank you.
Let's see some changes. I like some, I don't. Well, I'm glad you liked the cameras. Well, I'm glad you like the cameras.
It works right. Mostly when I write, I mess up.
Save this on that. Anna?
And that's what I wanted to talk about was ARPA.
See?
As you all know, uh, the last four years, we've all worked together diligently. Um, from the purchasing department and Nancy and the commissioners and Audrey and the prosecutor's office and Jody. Everybody had a hand in, in implementing ARPA. And December thirty first, twenty twenty four was the deadline to have all of the money obligated to projects. Forty four million four hundred and forty one dollars or four hundred and forty one thousand nine hundred and twelve dollars. Thanks to Audrey, we have a pound of the penny. And uh, without her help, um, we would have been relying more on Jen, obviously, or the auditor's office. But this was truly a program that came through the commissioners. Uh, the selection of the projects was all completed by the commissioners. We, you guys chose projects all over the county, including the city of Youngstown, a lot of assistance to the nonprofits that help the underserved throughout the community, even though they may have been centered within the city of Youngstown. You guys did not, uh, you know, let that hinder your decisions. It was for the people. Um, it helped everybody from townships to individual um, agencies and nonprofits across the whole county. So I want to thank you guys for your dedication. We made it through to December thirty first, twenty twenty four. And now we just have two more years for those people that had received agreements to complete the implementation process. So we have another two years of reporting and activities through ARPA. Um, but. Yeah, December thirty first, twenty twenty six. So, but we made it through the hard part. We made sure that every penny was stayed here in Mahoney County and I just want to thank you guys for that.
Thank you.
Bye.
And Ryan and Jody. Um. Oh, I do, I, I commend everyone who's worked on the ARPA funds and, and departments who have spent it and may use um, the dollars for technology within the county. As we can see here, and this is not only here, but this is in the courts, this is in the jail. These are uh, things that have happened as far as technology wise. Worked with the various boards and provided funding in those areas too. So it not only went external, it also went internal to and um, Anna, Jody, Ryan, everybody who's had a hand in using those dollars um, for the citizens of Mahoney County. It went from starting up new businesses to enhancing businesses. Um, to making sure that businesses were to stay in business during a tough time. And so it was, it was something that will probably, I don't think we'll ever see that again. Um, to get that influx of money that you actually had the ability to take the dollars. You know, because a lot of times the commissioners get funding for different projects and things, but they just don't get a bucket of money that says, okay, you tell us what your community uses, needs it for, and then you allocate it out. It's not like specific for this project, that project. It was your decisions on what and how those dollars were going to be used. And it was a great opportunity. It really, and I think that Mahoney County um, did the right thing with their dollars. They did the right thing with their dollars. They made sure it went everywhere. We didn't uh, hold it back so that we could get the interest off of the dollars and everything else and then try to push it out. The dollars went out immediately. They started going out as soon as we got the funds. And I appreciate all of the effort of everyone. It's been crazy sometimes with audit and thank the auditor's office too for getting us through some of those things too. Um, but it's a lot of dollars, a lot of reconciling, a lot of contracts, a lot of things, as Nancy would say, kill us about resolutions that weren't to what she wanted them to be. But it was, it was great. Everybody worked together on it, yes, her face shows that. Believe me, as you know, we're gonna get in trouble. Uh, but I do, everybody. Yep, everybody for working on it was, you know, appreciative. Every fiscal, every fiscal officer in the county who actually worked on it is appreciated. So it was a joint effort.
Anyone else?
Good morning, your sheriffs. This is uh, uh, County Commissioner Fabio, Troy Runes, Ohio Edison First Amendment. I'm sorry.
I apologize.
No, no, that's, I work with counts. My role is to be the advocate for the county as it relates to Ohio Edison First Amendment and also the Mayfair County and the different agencies aware of some of the work and some of the issues that we deal with on a day to day base, basis and just planning. So at some point I'll give you my business card and you can go into a little more detail. I would like to just uh, let everybody know, twenty twenty four was a rough year when it comes to storms. I appreciate uh, the EMA office, the nine one one center. Uh, first responders in dealing and supporting Ohio Edison out there as we try to restore power out there to the community. There's challenges at times because of the severity of the storm and the number of outages in certain communities, how we prioritize that type of work. Um, just wanted to give you that heads up there. Also, twenty twenty five, we're going to see some liability construction going on throughout the state or county. Um, with Ellsworth, Austen, those townships out there on project that's going to start in a fall. I'll keep you abreast of what that one is going to be out there. Um, and we are always doing upgrades throughout the community here. So any questions, concerns you may have, if you have my card, you will have that information. My other two friends, I'm always available.
And you honestly, that call goes to you, it's the immediate. Process is to give a call back. Someone says it'll be on the flowers. So if you have that, those in the neighborhoods, you know, sometimes we get the calls. So I appreciate that, Troy.
Thank you, thank you very much. Anyone else? Here, Gina. She has another call.
Maggie, this is a day, uh, it's sad for us and happy for you, I would think. You get to visit with your family now, California. And um, like I said, uh, when you during government for so long, you see uh, we see people start retiring. You think, oh my God, I know where it's coming. And you know what, I, I look at you and I think, wow, this is good. Hopefully, um, people that move into our positions now and grow are those that are going to have the same passion, understanding, to work at. And the lot, and the loyalty and integrity that they have. You have worked for them the first few years, for two, three years. And um, it's just, uh, we'll see. And I'm sure you'll get calls to help people, to guide them through that process. And uh, you will, you'll probably still answer your phone and do that. So I wish you the very best. Uh, it comes to the ARPA funding. I personally, uh, I know, I could, I know my colleagues feel the same way as well, although as Dave who was through that. Appreciate everything Anna, it's and um, Audrey and Jody and Jen come in. And our Nancy, there's so many and it's, and Rob, I mean, you can't name all the people that really try to make it work. And you did that, the effortless hecking. I mean, to try to get the money out there and convert and to do what you did to make all of Mahoney County get part of that. I've got to say, this administration that we have and the money that we forward. It's, uh, I said, universal work ethic that we have and we help everybody. And that includes all the cities and villages. We never hesitated to go forward on that. And with the uh, the program with, what's it, Teresa?
Mayback Valley Partners, four million dollars.
We gave money during the pandemic, whether they were a city company, county company, so that they can assist that either in funding as a, as a grant or as a, a slow interest loan. So um, that was a one time deal, I think, for our funding. I mean, I probably will never say that. I will never say no, because you don't know what's going to happen in the future. You know?
Not the COVID.
Yeah.
COVID. I mean, it was a sad way how that started. But yet that money helped first responders, learned how to dust equipment, beds. I mean, it was, uh, it was a process. That in that those months, that that COVID was there. My personally thought it was never gonna end. Even though it didn't, it's still here to some degree. It's never going to be like it was, God willing. So I want to thank everybody for that. And our group, Anthony Davis not here anymore, Gina will be in the future. Now, to keep on good things to do. I mean, I'm very excited about the future, a lot of new things. So we can just see.
Thank you, George. Gina? Uh, first of all, I want to thank you again, Maggie. And this is, I think, my fourth meeting at the county. And I didn't get a chance to meet you and talk to you, what you did. I met some of the department heads that can talk to some of our different boards and stuff. We got a lot of really great people working at the county. And what scares me is how smart these people are. I really, I mean, I want to make sure we have somebody behind all these great people, ready to step up when it's time. And that's one of my, make sure that we have some kind of sessions with them. For the great people, we do have, we really do have a lot of good people in the county. And again, what Anthony said about the plane crash this morning. That, that was horrible and you never know, believe in the event, the other day, some lady got hit by a car. Last night, walked, walked, walked across two twenty four cars. So the only thing I would say is, I honestly gotta try to treat everybody fairly and, and try to be the first one all the time. Because you, you, you never know what, you know, when the last time you talked to somebody, the last thing you do to somebody. The last way you treat somebody, I like to, how you're gonna be remembered. That's what I try to do, I try to treat everybody fairly and, and try to smile and have space and uh, because you never know, life is so precious, it really is a gift. And that's why you have to do the right thing all the time. I try to, I, I strive to, let's put it that way. And I always won't do the right thing, but I, that's, that's my goal. And when I got elected, my goal was to, to represent the residents of all the county, all of them. That's what I intend to do. And uh, I hope I do a good job so far from now. Or somebody else. Thank you. Carol let us know. Oh, Carol tell me. Look at all, we all love.
Oh my God, you know that tonight. You probably feel what you would have got from your family.
People all know it well, please. I echo my colleague sentiments and again, Maggie, thank you for your service in the county. And uh, I know you'll be around and uh, our doors will be so continued. Thank you once again for all the good you've done. Okay, our next meeting?
Next meeting.
Right here?
Yeah.
Anytime.
Thank you.
Okay.
Motion for adjournment.
Motion for adjournment. Central. Roll call.
Commissioner Di Fabio?
Yes.
Commissioner Remilio McGeady?
Yes.
Commissioner Chaffey Canty?
Thank you very much.